Robin and Lee. Just to let you know, you're going to be on YouTube, so you are now being recorded. Be careful what you say. Lee Roddenberg is one of the city council members speaking to us. He and his wife Jeannie have lived in Gig Harbor for a little over twenty-five years. He's retired from a fifty-year career in composites, and that's fiberglass. He started his career building surfboards under the pier in Huntington Beach, California. After fifty years in that industry, he is considered a national expert in all phases of composites, engineering, design, fabrication, environmental regulations. He is a small business owner or has been and has held senior positions at two Fortune 500 companies. He's also the president of the Gig Harbor Sportsman Club for twelve years now. That's Lee, and I want to welcome Lee, and now I'm going to introduce Robin because they're speaking together. Robin is the mother of two teenagers, a small business owner, and she hosts Harbor Chat on KGHPFM. I didn't know this, Robin. That's pretty cool. She's proud to be in the Gig Harbor City Council member, having previously served on the four terms on the City Parks Commission. She is currently the president of Communities and Schools and serves on the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Committee and the Downtown Waterfront Alliance Economic Vitality Committee. She's active in a number of events, including the Gig Harbor Veterans Day Celebration coming up very soon. She was a founding board member of the Harbor Wildwatch and has been in the Pierce County Conservative Futures Advisory Board. I don't even know what that is, Robin, but it sounds impressive. She's been working really hard with fellow council members to conserve eleven point five acres of streamside forest in downtown Gig Harbor. And now I'm going to turn the time over to you, and if everybody could mute except Robin and Lee, and if you'd like to put speaker view on, you will get a a better view of both of them. So I'm turning the time over. Robin and Lee, tell us about your job, and we have some questions for you.
Great. Well, thank you, and I know Lee and I were excited to be here. It's an honor to serve the citizens of Gig Harbor. Of course, we are elected officials, so we serve at your pleasure. And I know it's an honor for myself and I know for Lee as well to represent all of Gig Harbor. And our mission, I would say, is to is to improve lives here in Gig Harbor and make sure we're planning well for the future. Lee, do you want to say anything?
Well, whenever Robin and I speak together, I always defer to her for an introduction like that because she speaks so well and covers everything. So basically, everything she said is true. We're we both serve on the council to better the lives in Gig Harbor and conditions and infrastructure and in the employees' environment.
And I will make one comment that Lee and I are not running for election this year, which is fabulous. It's way more fun to just sit back and watch the show. But there is an election coming up, I think it's November second, and there's a variety of forums coming up, and I encourage you to attend those forums and get to know the candidates because it's very, very important who you elect. And you can ask all these questions or a lot of the questions you're asking Lee and I today to them as well. So Lee and I, we got some questions from you guys, so we kind of split them up and we thought we'd just launch right in, and then hopefully there'll be time at the end for other questions. So Lee, is it okay if I start?
Wait, Robin, one question first. Could you guys explain how the government works just briefly? What the role of the council is in the mayor? Because it's different in different cities.
Sure. Take a stab at that?
Well, we have a strong mayor form of government here, which means that the city administrator, which is generally elected by or chosen by the mayor, but approved by the city council, actually does the day-to-day operations. But the strong mayor position enables him to or allows him to make some some decisions that council always will have to approve. As far as the budget goes, the we're in that process right now forming the 2022 budget. And that's a that's probably one of the most important things we do, I feel it is. And the way that budget is started is each department head will give the mayor and copy the city administrator what their needs and wants are for their particular departments. The mayor goes over that. He determines what they need or, in his opinion, what they need and what they don't need. And he comes up with what he calls what is called the mayor's budget. So he may eliminate certain things that the department heads have asked for and saw the need for. But then that mayor's budget comes to council. And council then looks at the budget, and we also get to look at what was denied to the departments. And so we are the ones, council is the ones that actually approve the budget and can formulate it and essentially bring back some of those things that the departments didn't get or go ahead and approve some of the things that the mayor thought was important. That's that's one of the main things we do. Council is not supposed to be concerned with the day-to-day operations of the city. Sometimes, especially myself, it's hard not to become involved. And we've, you know, if you've been reading the papers in the last year and a half, you can see that we have been intimately involved in employee issues. Robin, can you add anything to that?
No, I think that was perfect. We do have an opportunity at the beginning of the budget process to submit lists of things that we would like to see in the budget. And so I know I submitted some things, I'm sure Lee did as well. And and so I think both of us are anxiously awaiting the release of the mayor's budget, which we should see September thirtieth or thereabouts, and then we can see what made it, what didn't. And then we we start hashing it out, and I know the council has fought for some different priorities this year that that we've been successful in getting into the budget or moving forward and in terms of priority, because just because it makes it into the budget, unfortunately, that doesn't mean it's going to happen during the year. We don't always have enough resources, and and this year, the issue has been staffing resources. It hasn't been money, it's been time. So council can step forward and say, we want to make sure this project gets moved forward. And and our council works very hard. We keep a really close eye on what's in the budget, what's getting done, what is not getting done. And, you know, we're not afraid to to step in and make sure that the priority, the priorities that we see as the people's priorities are getting done.
For the first time this year, council has requested that we get a quarterly report of every project that's out there and that is supposed to be scheduled for completion in 2021. And what is the status of it? Will it be in budget, under budget, over budget, on time? If not on time, why not? It's very interesting. The last quarterly report we got, there were several things that the reason it's not going to be completed in 2021 was staffing issues. We are budgeted for a certain level of staffing, yet we haven't hired the people necessary to do the job to get some of these projects done. Another word about the budget is we do have the opportunity during the year to amend the budget. If we see something else is falling short, needs a little bit more money, or another project is not going to need that particular money, we have an opportunity to change that as we roll along. That's not ideal, but sometimes necessary.
Well, thank you. Let's let's get to some interesting things that are happening now.
Okay, well, Lee and I kind of split the questions up, and if it's okay, Lee, I'm going to start. Because I want to get I want to get the growth management question out of the way. And I'm going to try and make this as brief as possible. It's a very complicated a complicated issue, but a very important one for Gate Harbor. We could spend hours on this. So if anybody has questions after this, I'm happy to talk more, or we could do another session just about this. But I'll try and make it brief. The Growth Management Act was passed by the legislature in nineteen ninety, and it was intended to guide planning for growth and development in Washington's fastest-growing counties, of which, of course, Pierce County is one. In a nutshell, the intent was to prevent sprawl and to keep our rural areas rural and try to develop and grow in the most efficient way possible and the most environmentally conscious way possible. And that was all about making sure or encouraging folks to live near work, near schools, near transportation, near existing infrastructure, like sewer systems and roads and water systems, things that were already developed and obviously would be easier if people were in kind of that same area. And then in the rural areas, the lots, as you know, are regulated to be larger to keep those rural areas more rural. So the act is not perfect. It probably needs to undergo some tweaking, but in my opinion, the intentions are really good. The challenge comes from the fact that Pierce County really manages this whole process. And right now, the city is working with Pierce County, our development department specifically, to work on what our next growth targets are. So the county will actually tell us how many new units we need to be planning for in the next number of years. So as you all know and have seen in your own communities, I'm sure, during the last ten to fifteen years, we've experienced, you know, a ton of growth, and a lot of that, you know, is justifiable because of the Growth Management Act. But what's interesting is the last period was 2020-10 to 2020-30. And just last year in 2020, so we're basically at the halfway point, we were already at ninety-four percent of our goal. So basically, and some would argue with occupancy increasing in these homes as we become younger and there's more and more kids, basically, we've met and exceeded that goal by a number of close to eight hundred housing units. So the real question, as we now go into negotiations with the county for the next period, which is 2020 to 2044, and it's confusing because it overlaps. Many of us on council, and I don't want to speak for Lee, but many of us on council feel like we should get some credit for going above and beyond in the last planning cycle. So we feel like we should get some credit for that eight hundred units as we move forward to look at how many units we are supposed to be developing in this upcoming period. And the reason for that is that we experience such fast growth, way faster than than had been originally planned by us and by the county, that our infrastructure did not keep up. And I'm sure a lot of you have experienced that with road congestion, our schools are overcrowded. Thank goodness, the schools are catching up a bit with the elementary schools, but we are overdue for more middle and certainly more more high schools in the near future. Our sewer, our water, our parks, all of that we're catching up on. And so personally, I would like to see some pretty modest goals that reflect what we've already achieved, you know, in good faith over the last, you know, ten, fifteen years. And so we're going to be talking as a council about growth targets in late October and, you know, sending hopefully a message to the county about what we feel is appropriate. So that's how the GMA affects the city. It's very important as you look at growing neighborhoods in the north side in particular, and on the west side of sixteen. So we need to make sure that everyone who's living in Gig Harbor, you know, is able to access amenities and access schools and access their workplace. And, you know, I'm sure you all have experienced the seems like rapidly increasing congestion problems on sixteen and downtown. And and we need to take a look at fixing some of those issues and easing it up before we add more cars and and more people to the equation. So Lee, would you like to take the next question?
Yeah, you rotary showed a concern and wanted to know what's going on with some of the properties that are owned by by the city. I can, there's like several, but I'll start with the Wilkinson Farm and and actually the barn there. There has to be a visioning process, a public visioning process go on, determine what use we want to use that barn for. Once that's determined, then it'll have to be remodeled, structurally made sound, ADA requirements and that sort of thing installed. So that's waiting on a a visioning process that's supposed to happen in the short term. Similar thing at the Masonic Temple at Crescent Creek Park. The visioning for the expansion of that park is due the first half of this 2022. After that visioning is done, whether or not the Masonic Temple fits into that will be determined at that visioning. If it is, then that building also will have to be brought up to ADA requirements, remodeled to fit the particular use that the public has determined it should be used for. A couple, I think probably eighteen months, two years ago, Mayor Coon got an estimate of what it would cost to refurbish that building and bring it up to ADA requirements, and it was just shy of five hundred thousand dollars. You might ask yourself, well, gee, you could build a new building for that. But it is a historic building, and if you've ever been in it, it's got some unique features that a lot of people feel should be preserved. The other one is the brick house at Edden Park. That remodeling is scheduled to be done in the next month or so. However, the occupancy of that cannot be done until the roundabout at Stinson and Harborview is completed. And the reason for that is that part of that roundabout construction is going to include parking that's required in order to get an occupancy permit for that building. It turned out that the refurbishing of that building was beyond budget. Simple reason was we we got a grant that's a historic building, and we got a grant to do some of the refurbishing. Well, as it turned out, the chimney was leaking, and it isn't like we could just patch it. We had to do it in the way that it would have been done when that building was built. And patching a leak around the seam in the roof turned out to be about twenty-six thousand dollars. It was a hard pill to swallow, but it was either do that or return the grant money that was used to refurbish the rest of it. Another property we own is that little, really a very nice house on Soundview. It's just north of Soundview Forest Park. It's an old brick, not old, maybe mid-fifties brick building that we've rented out. The tenant's lease was up, so we spent a little money refurbishing it, not much, but tried to lease it for thirty-five hundred dollars and couldn't find anyone to lease it. So the coming council meeting, the lease has been rewritten for twenty-eight hundred dollars a month. We have a tenant that's passed all the background checks and credit checks. So we expect that'll be occupied within the next month or so. If there's any other buildings that anyone here would like to care about, possibly I know what's going on. But that that kind of sums it up for city-owned properties.
Lee, could you go back to that roundabout?
Sure, well.
Tell us about the roundabout.
Well, the construction that went on this month was an emergency sewer repair. It's something that could not be postponed. Had we postponed it, we would have been dumping raw sewage into their bay. So that was an emergency that had to be done, unfortunately, in some of the at the same time school was coming back, same time as the tourist season was on and closed that intersection. Everyone was upset at that. But what has happened is we we did use some of that time while we had the the whole dug to replace some of the utilities that needed to be done along with the construction of the roundabout. The roundabout was supposed to start about now, but unfortunately, we're not going to be able to start it till next year, probably next March to the final construction, which would mean the occupancy permit for the small little brick house at Edden Boat Park is going to have to be, even though it's available to be used, won't get an occupancy permit for another year. Unfortunately, something that we just found out, well, council just found out, now you're finding out that Stinson itself, between Harborview and Rosedale, will be closed for the entire month, starting next week. So it'll be, yeah. People that live there, people that can live there can can access it. But the entire road, and that'll that has to do with the roundabout construction as well and removing and undergrounding some utilities. So the roundabout, that construction is going to be put off a year. Till next March.
Lee, about the the brick house that's by the down by the tides. Why is that owned by the city? Why are they renting it out? I mean, do you have to keep it because of certain requirements?
Yeah, well, that house came along with the property when we bought the land for the forest park. And in that agreement with the family that owned it, we had to keep it as an as an occupancy for ten years before we could reuse it as something to benefit the public. So that visioning should probably start the way, unfortunately, the way a city works, that visioning should probably start now because we have another six years before that'll be available for public use.
Yeah, unfortunately, these things take a long time, and we've got a lot in the queue. So the visioning should start, and we've got all sorts of ideas for that, and, you know, the community has come forward with ideas. But you heard, we also need visioning for Wilkinson Farm Park. We've had visioning for Crescent Creek Park on our agenda for I don't know how long because it was on the agenda when I was on the Parks Commission, so I would say a good five, seven, maybe more years. So there's a lot, lot in the queue. There's a lot to get done.
One more word about the roundabout. I had a citizen brought up a very good point about why do we do the construction in the summer? Well, he says anybody that's seen, been to Alaska or been to the Midwest, they know that construction projects go year-round regardless of the weather. It so happens that the soil down there is unstable, and any rain or water getting into that construction site would could be catastrophic. So that's one of the reasons why it's got to be done in in better weather.
Yeah, it is frustrating. Well, I want to give some good news. Some people asked about the area around Donkey Creek and what's going on with development there. Well, first, the Pierce County Conservation Futures Program, which is a county grant program, has awarded the city four hundred and thirty thousand dollars to purchase eleven and a half acres right across from Donkey Creek Park, right north of the wastewater treatment plant. So we're going to be closing on that, hopefully, if all goes well, next, early next year, hopefully first quarter. So we're conserving that land. There will be hopefully a trail developed through from Harborview Drive to the Cushman Trail, and for perpetuity, that land will be in conservation. We are also looking at some surrounding land, and we're in discussions with the property owners north of that. There's twenty-three acres that we're talking to. And then also just north of Austin, that little cut-through road right above Donkey Creek Park. I've got a meeting with the developers, well, the attorney for the sellers or the owners of that property on Monday. There's five and a half acres there. Both of those properties have pre-applications with the city. So the twenty-three acre is has a pre-application in the city for fifty townhome units. And they're going to be right there downtown, and they are pretty excited about that, but they're talking to us. And then the five and a half acres just north of Austin has a pre-application in the city for eighteen lots there. So those parcels are at high risk of development, and we're talking to them to see if we can come to some sort of agreement with the county to leverage those funds to be able to hopefully purchase some more of those properties. It's highly sensitive land because of North Creek, which is a significant salmon habitat, and it's also anthropologically important because this was the area of the Skoobabsh tribe, their main village site here in Gig Harbor. And so it's at high risk of archaeological findings. So and plus, the community just doesn't want to see more trees go down downtown Gig Harbor. So there's all sorts of reasons why why we're working hard on that.
I might add that the public's input, as we go through that process, the public's input and public comment at council meetings to support that would really be helpful.
For sure. And then another question we got was about swim safe or safe swim Gig Harbor, that initiative, which is a citizen initiative, very powerful, and whether the city is supportive of it. And I know I'm meeting with them. I think next week, Lee, you've probably met with them. The city has not taken a position. They haven't been asked to take a position on it. But, you know, it it sounds awesome. I'm very excited that PennMet is looking into it seriously because, you know, they are a much bigger parks organization than the city city has, and they've got property there, Peninsula Gardens, they're looking at it there. They probably have some other property somewhere else. So, you know, I I certainly would love to see it and would certainly, you know, support PennMet in in their efforts if they decide to move forward with that.
As I would. There's some other good news about the community paddlers docked. And I think Robin probably knows more about that than I do. Robin, would you want to? No? Well, I can tell you. Well, the contractor is preparing all of the submittals for the float and the dock. As you probably know, the Djerkovich family saved the city a lot of money by donating and letting us have part of their dock, so it'll be built off of that. So it should be by, the short of it is, probably by March of 2022, it'll be active. It'll be able to be used by the public. The boat storage or the kayak storage or actually the human-powered craft, it could be anything, canoe, kayak, that those racks are being designed now and built to go underneath there, if you're familiar with that part. It's just unfortunate that everything took so long. And as well as the home port for the fishermen on the other side of Ansich Park, there's money in the budget to start that design process as well.
Yes, very excited. So there's a lot of great things going on at the city. I think those were the questions that we had from you all. Do you guys have some additional questions?
I have a question. I hate, hi, Robin. I hate to go back to the roundabout, but it is the burning topic in town. Our roundabouts, some of them seem to be so incredibly too small. What determines or what do we look at future traffic projections so that we accommodate this expansion that's occurring so that we can use those? Are we going to see another really tight, small roundabout on Stinson and Harborview?
Well, those those designs are available on the web, on the city's website, but the short of it is, Cherry, part of the problem with building them in an existing intersection, for instance, Rosedale and Stinson, which is one of the smallest I've ever seen, that was met, that was designed with only a short elevation to be ran over by trucks on purpose. And it is within the state standard of of roundabouts. So between meeting the standard and acquiring property from the neighbors, that's the result of that one. But the one at Stinson is going to be much larger and be able to be utilized by all the traffic. It'll run the traffic through there much quicker. And I thought your question was going to be, are they safer? And I can tell you, they're absolutely much safer statistically.
Yeah, I completely agree with Lee. It was the best we could do. I have to say, Cherry, that is my least favorite roundabout in the city. But the more I drive it, the more I'm actually getting a little bit better at, you know, anticipating where people are going. And we did the best we could with it, and it's still, it's moving traffic better than the four-way before, the four-way stop. So thanks for that. What else?
What else?
Any input or updates on what's going on with the Mill Guard property off of Judson? And are they? And are they going to actually be building maybe some residential units? I, I, I appreciate what you guys are saying as far as the trees downtown. But honestly, the whole point is to have a dense downtown. So I happen to be a proponent of density downtown because I think it brings livelihood. I am such a fan of Edmonds. And they've got a lot of multi-unit properties that go up and down the hill. And I think it just changes the downtown.
I, I'll jump in real quick and say, I agree with you there, Mary, because that's redevelopment of an existing commercial structure. We, there are no trees and it's not an attractive best use of that parcel. So I don't know if Lee knows more than I do about the Mill Guards plans. You know, we've all heard the rumors of Town and Country, which seems to be, seems to be true. And for a while, we were talking about doing one or two levels of condos or something above that, which I agree, Mary, would be great for the downtown businesses.
I think five or six years ago, there was a terrific plan for that. And it just didn't get the public support or the city's support. But it was multi-use with underground parking, commercial stores and residences above the stores. And it was a, a nice design, but it is a piece of private property. So.
Yeah. Tell us what, what's coming in terms of applications. Sorry, go ahead, Mary.
I was just going to say that I think that part of it is, has to do with how cooperative the city was. And so I think that, you know, the more that we, the city encourages those kinds of projects and helps them figure it out, we'll have some success there. But, you know, if the city is kind of a, don't, not my backyard. Yeah, it just stopped the development of that property.
That, that's something I would certainly support. And I think, and I know Robin does as well. Like she said, that's already an existing blight.
Now, I, I will say that I know the community had concerns about going three and four stories up. But one or two stories, for the most part, even people I know up the hill there were okay with that because it wasn't going to block anybody's views. And they understood that this would add some vitality and people would do more walking to the restaurants and pubs and shops. And, and they thought, like you said, Mary, this would be more of a vibrant downtown that maybe doesn't close up at eight o'clock. Of course, we do have to be careful because it's a residential neighborhood. So we have to balance all of these concerns.
I think you meant five o'clock, Robin.
Party, party. Mark has a question. Uh-oh.
Well, as, as I recall, the Olympic Property Group was lobbying for five stories, which would have been the equivalent of what you see in, down in Ballard.
Oh, yeah.
I think three stories, maybe two in brownstones along Judson would be great.
We'll see what they come up with.
But, Mark, I, I think when OPG comes to us, something like that, certainly it's a financial decision on their part and whether they can make money at three stories or two stories. But I'm in, in favor of, let's talk to them. Let's, why don't we compromise? Why don't we come to an agreement with, with somebody? Why, why just say no and walk away?
Well, actually, to be honest, at the time, I talked to John Rose outside the box about coming back with something three stories. The reason they wanted five is because that's the max you can do without having to build a steel structure.
Oh, interesting. But I, I agree with Lee. The city needs to do better at trying to get to yes with these different entities. Sometimes we can't, but we should be sitting down and trying to figure out if we can come to an agreement that works for the for-profit entity and that works for the community and at least making an effort to see where we can move things around and shift things and, and try and make it work if we think it makes sense for the community.
Well, I think we are, I really appreciate the time, Lee and Robin. What is the best way to check on when the meetings are and just go to City of Gig Harbor?
You can actually sign up to be notified via email when the meetings are. And that's not just council meetings, but that's every committee meeting. And I would encourage everyone to attend those. And we welcome your input. Which brings up communications. And I think one of the questions is, how do you get ahold of a council person? I know that all of us certainly carry our phones with us everywhere as far as getting emails. I, I don't know how many I get a day, but if someone would send me a short email asking for a call, I'd, we're always, Robin and I, I know, are both always anxious to talk to constituents.
So the City of Gig Harbor website also has your email. And, and you can sign up for notifications there.
Yes.
Okay, well, we really appreciate your time, both of you. Thank you very much. And I'm going to adjourn this meeting. It's time. You all have things to do. Thank you. Thank.